Hello and welcome to study session number thirty of daily memory lab. In today's study session, we will read page number twenty-three to thirty-one of supply under GST chapter round five. And then we will go to charge of GST chapter, we will read page number eight to thirteen, round four. And then we will go to page number fifty to fifty-five of charge of GST, round three. Then we will read what we read yesterday, round two, and then we will read place of supply, new pages for today. Let me start the session with the pre-study session intention. Now, I am going to study for thirty to sixty minutes with full focus. In this study session, I lower down all my expectations and embrace imperfection. I may or may not get big breakthroughs in the next study session, but I am totally okay with it. I will most likely make mistakes in the next thirty to sixty minutes, and if I make them, I am not going to judge myself. I embrace my mistakes and reset my ambitions. My goal is not to achieve perfection, my goal is to make a tiny progress in the next thirty to sixty minutes. On that note, let us go to supply under GST page number twenty-three. Thus, business includes any activity or transaction which is incidental or ancillary to any trade, commerce, manufacture, profession, vocation, adventure, wager, or any other similar activity. In addition, any activity undertaken by the central government or a state government or any local authority in which they are engaged as public authority shall also be construed as business. For any trade, commerce, or any other similar activity to qualify as business, frequency, volume, continuity, or regularity of such a transaction or obtaining pecuniary benefit from, pecuniary benefit from is not a prerequisite. Some of the examples of supply made or not made in the course or furtherance of business are as follows. Reshob buys a car for his personal use and after a year sells it to a car dealer. Sale of car by Reshob to a car dealer is not a supply under GST because the said supply is not made by Reshob in the course or furtherance of business. Mani Karnika sold her old gold bangles and earrings to Abhoshan jewelers. Sale of old gold jewelry by an individual to a jeweler will not constitute supply as the same cannot be said to be in the course or furtherance of business of the individual. Since business includes vocation, therefore, supply of goods or service as a vocation is also supply under GST. Sundaram Acharya, a famous actor, paints some paintings and sells them. The consideration from such sale is to be donated to a charitable trust, kind human. The sale of paintings by the actor qualifies as supply as it is made in the course or furtherance of business. Facilities provided by the club or association to its members or consideration are provided in course or furtherance of business. A resident welfare association provides the service of depositing the electricity bills of the residents uh against some nominal charges. Provision of service by a club or association or society to its members is included in the definition of business. Admission of persons to any premises for a consideration is also included in business. Services by way of admission to circus, cinema halls, amusement parks, theme parks, water parks are considered as supply as these services are by way of admission of persons to any premises for a consideration. Business includes activities of a race club including by way of totalizer or a license to bookmaker or activities of a licensed bookmaker in such club. Royal Turf Race Club is engaged in facilitating facilitating the wagering or betting of transactions on horses placed through totalizer. For providing the service of facilitating wagering transactions, Royal Turf Race Club gets commission which is deducted and retained by the club from the total bet value. Set services amount to supply as the activities of a race club are included in business. There is one exception to this course or furtherance of business, that is import of services for a consideration. In the subsequent paras, we have discussed the exceptions to the two parameters of supply namely, supply made for consideration but not in the course or furtherance of business and supply made without consideration. Importation of services for consideration whether or not in course or furtherance of business. The connotation of supply gets expanded significantly through the sec- to the second of, second part of section seven that is seven subsection one clause B, which brings within the ambit of supply the importation of services for a consideration whether or not in the course or furtherance of business. This is the only exception to the condition of supply being made in course or furtherance of business. Ramaya, a proprietor, has received the architect services for his personal residence from an architect located in New York at an agreed, register, at at an agreed consideration of five thousand dollars. The import of services by Ramaya is supply under section seven subsection one clause B though it is not in course or furtherance of business. Activities without consideration that is deemed supply. Permanent transfer of, permanent transfer or disposal of business assets where input tax credit has been availed on such assets. Supply of goods or services or both between related persons or between distinct persons as specified in section twenty-five when made in the course or furtherance of business. Provided that gifts not exceeding fifty thousand rupees in value in a financial year by an employee to an employ, by an employer to an employee shall not be treated as supply of goods or services or both. Supply of goods by a principal to his agent where the agent undertakes to supply such goods on behalf of the principal or by an agent to his principal, that is, supply of goods by an agent to his principal where the agent undertakes to receive such goods on behalf of the principal. Import of services by a person from a related person or from any of his other establishments outside India in the course or furtherance of business. Okay, as seen earlier, section seven subsection one clause C provides that supply includes the activities specified in schedule one made or agreed to be made without a consideration. Thus, there are activities or transactions that are treated as supply even if they are made without consideration. These are specifically mentioned in schedule one appended to the CGST Act. The same has been discussed in the subsequent paras. In the past indirect tax regime, in every tax statute, consideration played the most important role for living taxes. For instance, if any service was provided for free to a person, such service was not subject to service tax. However, under GST, the consider, the condition of consideration has been dispensed within certain case. This is an important departure from the earlier indirect tax regime. As per schedule one, in the following four cases, activities made without consideration will be treated as supply under section seven. Permanent transfer or disposal of business assets, para number one of schedule one. Okay, schedule one is about activities which are without concentration, still they are deemed as supply. Any kind of disposal or transfer of business assets made by an entity on permanent basis even though without consideration qualifies as supply. However, it is important to note that this provision would apply only if input tax credit has been availed on such assets. Therefore, in order to qualify as supply under this para, following conditions need to be satisfied. There must be a disposal or transfer of business assets. Transfer or disposal must be permanent, I T C must have been availed on such business assets. In view of the last condition stipulated above, permanent transfer or disposal of following business assets without consideration will not be covered within this para and thus will not be deemed as supply. Business assets on which I T C is blocked, that is not available under GST. Business assets though eligible for I T C, I T C has not been availed by the registered person. It is important to note that the term business asset has not been defined under the GST law. Dru gives old laptops being used in his business to his friend free of cost. This will qualify as supply provided input tax credit has been availed by Dru on such laptops. A dealer of air conditioners permanently transfers the motor vehicle free of cost. I T C on said motor vehicle is blocked, the transaction will not constitute a supply as the condition of availability of I T C on the business asset transferred is not fulfilled. This clause is wide enough to cover transfer of business assets from holding company to subsidiary company for nil consideration. Supply between related person or distinct persons, para two of schedule one. Supply of goods or services or both between related persons or between distinct persons as specified in section twenty-five will qualify as supply even with if made without consideration provided it is made in the course or furtherance of business. Let us understand the terms related persons and distinct persons. Related person, a person who is under influence of another person is called related person like members of the same family or subsidiaries of a group company. Under GST law, various categories of related persons have been specified. The term related person has been defined in explanation to section fifteen. The said definition has been depicted by way of a diagram as follows. Persons including legal person are deemed as related persons if such persons are officers or directors of one another's business. Such persons are legally recognized partners. Such persons are employer and employee. A third person controls, owns, holds directly or indirectly greater than or equal to twenty-five percentage voting stock or shares of both of them. One of them controls directly or indirectly the other. A third person controls directly or indirectly both of them. Such persons together control directly or indirectly a third person. Such persons are members of the same family. One of them is the sole agent or sole distributor or sole concessioner of the other. Okay. Miss Priya holds thirty percentage shares of A B C Limited and thirty-five percentage of shares of X Y Z Limited. A B C Limited and X Y Z Limited are related. Q Limited has a deciding role in corporate policy, operations management and quality control of R Limited. It can be said that Q Limited controls R Limited, thus Q Limited and R Limited are related. Distinct persons specified under section twenty-five. Before we go through the statutory provisions of distinct persons, let us first have an overview of the registration provisions for better understanding of the concept of distinct persons. Under GST law, a supplier is required to obtain statewide registration. He has to obtain registration in every state or union territory from where he makes a taxable supply. Provided his aggregate turnover exceeds a specified threshold limit. Thus, he is not required to obtain registration from a state or union territory from where he makes a non-taxable supply. Since registration in GST is pan-based, once a supplier is liable to register, he has to obtain registration in each of the state or union territories in which he operates and makes a taxable supply under the same pan. Further, he is normally required to obtain single registration in a state or union territory. However, where the, where he has multiple places of business in a state or union territory, he can get a single registration for the said state or union territory. He may also get separate registration for any place or place of business in such state or union territory. Now let us understand the concept of distinct persons in simple terms. The establishment of a person with the separate registrations, whether within the same state or union territory or in different state or union territory are considered as distinct persons. Where a person having one registered establishment in a state has another establishment in a different state, not necessarily registered, these establishments are considered as establishments of distinct persons. Okay. Statutory provisions relating to distinct persons are contained in subsection four and five of section twenty-five. They have been explained as follows. A person who has obtained or is required to obtain more than one registration, whether in one state or union territory or more than one state or union territory in respect of each such registration be treated as distinct persons. Okay. Mohan, a chartered accountant, has a registered head office in Delhi. He has also obtained registration in the state of West Bengal in respect of his newly opened branch office. Mohan, Mohan's registration under GST has, Mohan's registration under GST under same pan in West Bengal and Delhi shall be treated as distinct persons. Further, where a person who has obtained or is required to obtain registration in a state or union territory in respect of establishment has an establishment in another state or union territory, then such establishments shall be treated as establishments of distinct persons. Rishab Enterprises, a registered supplier, owns an air-conditioned restaurant in Virar, Maharashtra. It has opened a liquor shop in Raipur, Uttarakhand for trading of alcoholic liquor for human consumption. Since supply of alcoholic liquor for human consumption in Uttarakhand is a non-taxable supply, Rishab Enterprises is not required to obtain registration with respect to the same in Uttarakhand. In this case, air-conditioned restaurant in Maharashtra and the liquor shop in Uttarakhand shall be treated as establishment of distinct persons. Supply by Maharashtra Restaurant to Uttarakhand Shop in course or furtherance of business even without consideration will qualify as supply. That concludes our first segment for the day. Let us go to the next segment which is charge of GST, page number eight to thirteen. Extent and commencement of GST law. CGST Act extends to the whole of India. India means a territory of India referred to in article one of the constitution. Its territorial waters, seabed and the subsoil underlying such waters, continental shelf, exclusive economic zone or any other maritime zone has referred to in the territorial waters, continental shelf, exclusive economic zone and other maritime zones act nineteen seventy-six. The airspace above its territory and the territorial waters. Second point, state GST law of the respective state or union territory with the legislature extends to the whole of that state or union territory. States include union territory with le- legislature, integrated G S T Act extends to the whole of India. U T G S T Act extends to the union territories of Andaman and Nicobar islands, islands, Lakshadweep, Dadra and Nagar Haveli, Damanan Diyu, Ladakh, Chandigarh and other territory, the, that is the union territories without legislature. Okay. Explanation, for the purposes of this act, each of the territories specified in sub clauses A to F shall be considered to be a separate union territory. Okay. Sudhakar Enterprises has undertaken an intrastate supply of taxable goods. CGST and UT GST will be payable on the said supply provided the supply is made within Delhi, Puducherry, Ladakh and Jammu Kashmir. The answer is Ladakh because Delhi, Puducherry and J N K, all of them have legislature, therefore S G S T will be applied. Okay. Levy and collection of CGST and IGST, section nine of the CGST Act and section five of the IGST Act. Subject to the provisions of subsection two, there shall be levied a tax called CGST on all intrastate supplies of goods or services or both except on the supply of alcoholic liquor for human consumption on the value determined under section fifteen and at such rates not exceeding twenty percent as may be notified by the government on the recommendations of the council and collected in such manner as may be prescribed and shall be paid by the taxable person. Point number two, that is subsection number two. The central tax on the supply of petroleum crude, high-speed diesel, motor spirit commonly known as petrol, natural gas, aviation turbine fuel shall be levied with the effect from such date as may be notified by the government on the recommendations of the council. The government may, on the recommendations of the council, by notification, specify categories of supply of goods or services or both. The tax on which shall be paid on reverse charge basis by the recipient of such goods or services or both and all the provisions of this act shall apply to such recipient as if he is the person liable for paying the tax in relation to the supply of such goods or services or both. Point number four, the government may, on the recommendations of the council, by notification, specify a class of registered persons who shall, in respect of supply of specified categories of goods or services or both, received from an unregistered supplier, pay the tax on reverse charge basis as the recipient of such supply of goods or services or both and all the provisions of this act shall apply to such recipient as if he is the person liable for paying the tax in relation to such supply of goods or services or both. The government may, on the recommendations of the council, by notification, specify categories of services the tax on intrastate supplies of which shall be paid by the e-commerce operator if such services are supplied through it and all the provisions of this act shall apply to such e-commerce operator as if he is the supplier liable for paying the tax in relation to the supply of such services. Provided that where an e-commerce operator does not have a physical presence in the taxable territory, any person representing such e-commerce operator for any purpose in the taxable territory shall be liable to pay tax, provided further that where an e-commerce operator does not have a physical presence in the taxable territory and also he does not have a representative in the said territory, such e-commerce operator shall appoint a person in the taxable territory for the purpose of paying tax and such tax and such person shall be liable to pay tax. Okay, so whatever is given in CG, was given in CGST provision, has again been provided in IGST. The differences will be section fifteen of CGST, here it will be section five, there it was section nine and there it was section twenty, I mean rate was twenty percentage here, the maximum rate will be forty percentage. I think that's it, so apart from that, everything else will be the same. So that concludes our second segment. Which is charge of GST page eighteen to thirteen, now let us go to the third segment of today's quota. Fifty to fifty-five page number, same chapter, fifty to fifty-five. Turnover limit for opting for composition levy, section ten subsection one, ten subsection two A, and ten subsection three. Let us see ten subsection one. Section ten subsection one provides the turnover limit of fifty lakhs in the preceding financial year for becoming eligible for composition levy under section ten subsection one. However, proviso to section ten subsection empowers the government to increase the said limit of fifty lakhs up to one and a half crores on the recommendation of the GST council in view of the set power of the government. The turnover limit for composition levy under that section has been increased from fifty lakhs to one and a half crores. Wide notification number fourteen slash twenty nineteen, dated seventh March twenty nineteen. However, the said notification further stipulates that the turnover limit for composition levy under section ten subsection one shall be seventy-five lakhs in respect of eight of the special category states. Arunachal Pradesh, Uttarakhand, Manipur, Meghalaya, Mizoram, Nagaland, Sikkim and Tripura. In case of special category states of Assam, Himachal Pradesh and Jammu and Kashmir, the turnover limit will be one and a half crores only. Thus, if the aggregate turnover of a supplier in a state or union territory other than special category states is up to one and a half crores in the preceding financial year, the said supplier is eligible for composition scheme under section ten subsection one. Further, it is important to note that the aggregate turnover is computed on all India basis for a person having the same permanent account number. A shoes dealer, Prithviraj, has offices in Maharashtra and Goa. He makes intrastate supply of goods from both these offices. In order to determine whether Prithviraj is eligible to avail benefit of the composition scheme under section ten subsection one, turnover of both the offices would be taken into account and if the same does not exceed one and a half crores in the preceding financial year, Prithviraj can opt to avail the composition levy scheme for goods or uh for both the offices in the current financial year. Further, the option of a registered person to avail composition scheme under section ten subsection one shall lapse with the effect from the day on which his aggregate turnover during the financial year exceeds the threshold limit of one point five crores or seventy-five lakhs in case of the eight special category states, section ten subsection three. Turnover limit in case of composition levy under section ten subsection two A. Section ten subsection two A provides the turnover limit of fifty lakhs in the preceding financial year for becoming eligible for, for becoming eligible for composition levy under section ten subsection two A. A hair stylist, Billu Barber, has his salon in Delhi and Haryana making interstate supplies. In order to determine whether Billu is eligible to avail a benefit of the composition scheme under section ten subsection two A, turnover of both the salons would be taken into account and if the turnover does not exceed fifty lakh in the preceding financial year, Billu can opt to avail the composition scheme, uh composition levy scheme for services for both the salons in the current financial year. Further, the option of a registered person to avail composition scheme under section ten subsection two A shall lapse with the effect from the day on which his aggregate turnover during a financial year exceeds the threshold limit of fifty lakhs, section ten subsection three. To summarize, a registered person opting for composition scheme under section ten subsection one should have an aggregate turnover of up to one and a half crores in the preceding financial year and he can avail the benefit of the set scheme for the current financial year till the time his aggregate turnover in the current financial year does not exceed one and a half crores. Similarly, a registered person opting for composition scheme under section ten subsection two A should have an aggregate turnover of up to fifty lakhs in the preceding financial year and he can avail the benefit of the set scheme for the current year till the time his aggregate turnover in the current financial year does not exceed fifty lakhs. From the above discussion, it is apparent that the term aggregate turnover is of utmost importance. So let us understand this term in detail. Aggregate turnover or under composition levy, section two subsection six, sorry, section two clause six read with explanation one to section ten. The definition of aggregate turnover as contained in section two clause six of the CGST Act is analyzed as follows. The aggregate turnover is the sum of value of all outward supplies falling in the four categories. Taxable supplies, exam supplies, export of goods or services or both and interstate supplies. It excludes the value of inward supplies on which taxes payable by a person on reverse charge basis and then taxes including sis paid under GST law. Taxable supplies, exam supplies, export of goods or services or both, okay, these are all included, aggregate turnover. It is computed on all India basis for a per- It is computed on all India basis for a person having same permanent account number. Further, explanation one to section ten clarifies that for the purposes of computing aggregate turnover of a registered person for determining his eligibility to pay tax under this section. Aggregate turnover includes value of supplies from first of a financial year up to the date of his becoming liable for registration and excludes value of exam supply of services provided by way of extending deposits, loans or advances insofar as the consideration is represented by way of interest or discount. On combined reading of the above said provisions, the method of computing the aggregate turnover for the purpose of determining the eligibility of a registered person for the composition scheme can be depicted in the in a diagram as follows. My doubt is there is a specific disqualification clause that person supplying in interstate supplies is not eligible for composition scheme. So in that case, why are they considering interstate supplies for computing aggregate turnover? Because who are not eligible for composition scheme? Supplyor engaged in making any interstate outward supplies of goods or services. There is a disqualification provision here. But how come it can be added here interstate supplies? Okay, anyway, let me proceed. While computing the threshold of one and a half crore seventy-five lakhs fifty lakhs, inclusions in and exclusions from aggregate turnover are as follows. Aggregate turnover includes value of all outward supplies of taxable supplies, exam supplies, exports, interstate supplies of persons having the same pan be computed on all India basis. Value of supplies made by registered person from first April of a financial year up to the date when he becomes liable for registration under this act. Excludes the CGST SGST tax values as well as reverse charge uh in input uh by inward supply values. And then it excludes value of exam supplies of services provided by way of extending deposits. Okay, the principal amount of the loans and deposits that you give. Okay, rates of tax under the composition levy scheme, ten subsection one, ten subsection two A, read with rule seven. Rule seven prescribes the rate, okay? Let us see what are the rates. A registered person opting for composition levy under section ten subsection one shall pay tax calculated at the prescribed rates during the current financial year. Uh regarding uh the tax payable by him, okay. Manufacturers other manufact- other than manufacturers of notified goods, that is ice cream, pan masala, tobacco, aerated drinks, fly ash bricks, all those people. So general manufacturers other than the manufacturers of all these things because the manufacturers of these notified goods are not eligible for composition scheme in the first place, therefore they are excluding this. So other than this, whoever the manufacturers are, they are eligible for half percentage of turnover which is effective rate will be one percentage overall. And then suppliers making supplies referred to in clause B of paragraph six of schedule two which is restaurant sup- restaurant service. So if you are supplying only restaurant service, then you can register yourself under section ten subsection one and you don't have to opt section ten subsection two A. Then in that case, the effective rate for you is two and a half percentage. Any other supplier eligible for composition levy under section ten CGST Act and chapter two of CGST rule, half percentage of turnover of taxable supplies of goods and services in the said state or union territory. So again totally one percentage. Okay, so on that note, I will just read this paragraph one more time. Students may note that the aggregate turnover of preceding financial year is relevant for the purpose of determining eligibility to avail composition scheme. But the tax has to be paid in accordance with applicable rates on the turnover. Okay, the concept of turnover in state and union territory under composition leave levy has been explained subsequently. I'm still confused about why are they including a person? Here they are saying a person who is doing inter registered person who is not eligible for composition scheme under section ten subsection one. A supplier engaged in making any interstate outward supplies of goods and services. So if I am a person who is having interstate outward supplies, then definitely I am not eligible to be in composition scheme in the first place. Then why am I even considering this interstate supplies while defining aggregate turnover? That is a new doubt that I am currently having. Anyway, let us keep this as open loop and move on. This segment is over. Let us go to the next segment which is place of supply. We are doing round two of what we read yesterday. Introduction, GST is a destination based tax. That is, the tax is levied at the place where the goods or services are consumed rather than the place where they are produced. The determination of place of supply and the location of the supplier is essential to ascertain the nature of supply. Whether a supplier, whether the supply is intrastate or interstate. In other words, these two factors are required to determine whether a supply is subject to SGST, UTGST plus CGST in a given state or union territory or else it would attract IGST if it is an interstate supply. If an interstate transaction is wrongly treated as intrastate or vice versa and tax is paid accordingly, the correct tax will be required to be paid and refund to be claimed for tax wrongly paid. Though no interest is levied in such a case, procedural requirements increase and working capital gets blocked where the amount involved is huge. Hence, determining correct place of supply is of paramount importance. Section two clause eighty-six of the CGST Act two thousand seventeen defines place of supply to mean the place of supply as referred to in chapter five of the IGST Act twenty seventeen. Thus, in order to understand the provisions of the place of supply, we need to refer to the provisions of the relevant chapter of IGST Act. In simple words, place of supply is the place where the supply is consumed. Thus, place of supply determines the jurisdiction where the tax revenue should reach. Now the question arises as to how to determine the place of supply. Goods usually being tangible do not pose any significant problems for determination of their place of consumption. Services usually being intangible pose problems with refect with respect to determination of place of supply mainly due to following factors. The manner of delivery of a service could be altered easily. For example, telecom service could change from postpaid to prepaid or billing address of the customer could be changed. Repair or maintenance of software could be changed from onsite to online. Banking services earlier required customer to go to the bank. Now the customer can avail service from anywhere. Service provider, service receiver and the service provided may not be ascertainable or may easily be suppressed as nothing tangible moves and there would be hardly any trail. For supplying a service, a fixed location of service provider is not mandatory and even the service recipient may receive service while on the move. The location of building could be changed overnight. Sometimes, the same element may flow to more than one location. For example, construction or other services in respect of a railway line, a national highway or a bridge on a river which is originated in one state and ends in another state. Similarly, a copyright for a distribution and exhibition of a film could be assigned for many states in a single transaction or an advertisement or a program is broadcast across the country at the same time. An airline may issue seasonal tickets containing say ten vouchers which could be used for travel between any two locations in the country. The card issued by Delhi Metro could be used by a person located in Noida or New Delhi or Faridabad without the New Delhi Metro being able to distinguish the location or journeys at the same at the time of receipt of payment. Services are continuously evolving and thus continue to pose newer challenges. For example, fifteen to twenty years back, no one could have thought of DTH online for information, online banking, online booking of tickets, internet, mobile telecommunications, et cetera. Considering the difficulties in determining the actual place of consumption of services, the various elements involved in a service transaction are used as proxies for determining the place of consumption or place of supply of such services. A proxy which gives more appropriate result than others for determining the place of supply could be used for determining the place of supply. The various elements used for determining the place of supply are location of service provider, location of service receiver, place where the activity takes place or place of performance, place where services consumed, place or person to which actual benefit flows. Separate rules for determining place of supply in respect of B two B and B two C transactions. In respect of B two B transactions, the supply is made by a registered person to another registered person and the taxes paid are taken as credit by the recipient. So such transactions are just passed through. GST collected on B two B supplies effectively create a liability for the government and an asset for the recipient of such supplies inasmuch as the recipient is entitled to use the input tax credit for payment of future liability. Future tax liability. For B two B transactions, the location of recipient takes care in almost all the situations as further credit is to be taken by the recipient. The recipient usually further supplies to another customer. The supply is consumed only when a B two B transaction is further converted into B two C transaction. In respect of B two C transactions, the supply is made to an unregistered person who consumes the same and the taxes paid actually reach the government. B two B transactions, in such type of transactions, recipient is also a registered supplier and hence eligible to take I T C. B two B transactions, in such type of transactions, the recipient is a consumer or unregistered and hence cannot take I T C. Provisions for determination of place of supply in GST law. On the basis of the above guiding principles, chapter five of IGST Act prescribes both general and specific rules to determine place of supply of goods and services in various circumstances. These provisions prescribe the provisions relating to place of supply of goods and services in domestic as well as cross-border transactions. At the inter level, we will restrict our discussion only to domestic transactions, okay? Relevant definitions. Continuous journey means a journey for which a single or more than one ticket or invoice is issued at the same time. Either by a single supplier of service or through an agent acting on behalf of more than one supplier of service and which involves no stopover between any of the legs of the journey for which one or more separate tickets or invoices are issued. Explanation, for the purposes of this clause, the term stopover means a place where a passenger can disembark either to transfer to another conveyance or break his journey for a certain period in order to resume it at a later point of time. Section two clause three, the term conveyance has been defined in section two clause thirty-four of the CGST Act to include a vessel, an aircraft and a vehicle. Fixed establishment means a place other than the place of business which is characterized by a sufficient degree of permanence and a suitable structure in terms of human and technical resources to supply services or to receive and use services for its own needs. Section two clause seven. Location of the recipient of services means where a supply is received at a place of business for which registration has been obtained. The location of such place of business where a supply is received at a place other than the place of business for which registration has been obtained, that is to say a fixed establishment elsewhere than the location of such fixed establishment. Whereas supply is received at more than one establishment, whether the place of business or fixed establishment, the location of the establishment most directly concerned with the receipt of the supply. And in absence of such places, the location of the usual place of residence of the recipient. Section two clause fourteen, the definition of fixed establishment for this purpose has been discussed above. The definition of place of business is discussed later. Okay, so we read till here yesterday. Now let us begin the fresh pages for today. The above definition relates only to services. The term location of recipient of goods has not been defined in the act. Location of recipient of services, supply received at place of business for which registration is obtained, then location of such place of business. Fixed establishment is elsewhere, location of such fixed establishment. More than one establishment whether of whether place of business or fixed establishment. Location of the establishment most directly concerned with the receipt of supply and then in absence of such places, usual place of residence of the recipient. Okay, location of the supplier of services means whereas supply is made from a place of business for which registration has been obtained, the location of such place of business. Whereas supply is made from a place other than the place of business for which registration has been obtained, that is to say a fixed establishment elsewhere, the location of such fixed establishment. Where a supply is made from more than one establishment, whether the place of business or fixed establishment, the location of the establishment most directly concerned with the provision of the supply and in absence of such places, the location of the usual place of residence of the supplier. Section two clause fifteen. Again, the above definition relates only to services. Location of supplier of goods has not been defined. Okay, as already pointed out, that location of supplier of goods is not defined in the law. Only the location of supplier of services is defined. Services being intangible sometimes leave no trail as to the location from where they are supplied and for that reason, a specific definition is required. Where whereas in case of goods, it is easier to determine as to where the goods are actually located. Taking a cue from the definition of the place of supply, location of supplier of goods is where business is ordinarily carried on or where the goods themselves are located. Place of business includes a place from where the business is ordinarily carried on and includes a warehouse, a go down or any other place where a taxable person stores his goods, supplies or receives goods or services or both or a place where a taxable person maintains his books of account or a place where a taxable person is engaged in business through an agent by whatever name called. This is an inclusive definition and is applicable for both goods and services. Supply shall have the same meaning as assigned to it in section seven of the CGST Act. recipient of supply of goods or services or both means where a consideration is payable for the supply of goods or services or both, the person who is liable to pay that consideration. Where no consideration is payable for the supply of goods, the person to whom the goods are delivered or made available or to whom the possession of possession or use of the goods is made available. And where no consideration is payable for the supply of a service, the person to whom the service is rendered and any reference to a person to whom a supply is made. And any reference to a person to whom a supply is made. Shall be construed as a reference to the recipient of the supply. And shall include an agent acting as such on behalf of the recipient in relation to the goods or services or both supplied. Okay, I am just. Not reading this because the definition of a supplier, we have already read in supply under GST chapter quite so many times. So let me proceed further. Words and expressions used and not defined in the IGST act but defined in in the after supplies CGST act. The Union Territory GST Act and the GST Compensation to States Act shall have the same meaning as assigned to them. In those apps, okay, place of supply of goods other than supply of goods imported into or exported from India, so this is for. Place of supply provisions regarding domestic supplies. Okay, section ten clause, I mean subsection one, the place of supply of goods. Other than supply of goods imported into or exported from India shall be as under. Where the supply involves movement of goods. Whether by the supplier or the recipient or by any other person. The place of supply of such goods shall be the location of the goods at the time at which the movement of. Goods terminates for delivery to the recipient, okay, the place of destination. Class B. Where the goods are delivered by the supplier to a recipient or any other person on the direction of a third person. Whether acting as an agent or otherwise before or during movement of goods. Either by way of transfer of documents of title to the goods or otherwise. It shall be deemed that the said third person has received the goods and the place of supply of such goods. Shall be the principal place of business of such person. Where the supply does not involve movement of goods, whether by the supplier or the recipient. The place of supply shall be the location of such goods at the time of delivery to the recipient. So this talks about does not involve movement of goods, so I think this is like construction of. Building or something like that when building becomes goods. Where the supply of goods is made to a person other than a registered person, the place of supply shall. Notwithstanding anything contained contrary in clause A or C. Be the location as per the address of the said person recorded in the invoice issued in respect of the said supply. And the location of the supplier where the address of the said person is not recorded in the invoice. For the purposes of this clause, recording of the name of the state of the said person in the invoice shall be deemed to be. The recording of the address of the said person. Where the goods are assembled or installed at site, the place of supply shall be the place of such installation or assembly. And then where the goods are supplied on board a conveyance including a vessel, an aircraft, a train or motor vehicle. The place of supply shall be the location at which such goods are taken on board. Okay, whether the where the place of supply of goods cannot be determined. The place of supply shall be determined in such manner as may be prescribed. Okay, so now let us see each and everything in detail, rules to provide the place of supply of goods. Section ten subsection one, goods supplied on board a conveyance, goods installed at a site, supply not involving movement of goods. Goods delivered on build to ship to model and then good supply involving movement of goods. Let us see them in detail. It must be kept in mind that the provisions of section ten discussed here under are all in relation to. Domestic supply of goods, ten subsection one clause A. In sup- in case of supply of. In case of supply involving movement of goods, the place of supply is the location of the goods at that time when the movement of goods terminates. For delivery to the recipient. The location of the goods is a question of fact to be ascertained by observing the journey. That the goods so supplied make from their origin to termination. This moment however can be undertaken by the supplier or recipient or even any other person. After having disclosed the destination of the movement of goods. It is important to understand that this provision does not apply in cases where there is no movement of goods. Also, this provision does not link itself to transfer of property in goods. But to the tra- but to the movement of goods. Baban Private Limited of Nashik Maharashtra. Sells ten refrigerators to Chagun Private Limited of Pune, Maharashtra. For delivery at place of business of Chagun Private Limited in Pune, the place of supply is Pune which is the destination where the delivery is terminated. Baban Private Limited of Nashik Maharashtra sells twenty refrigerators to Dakkan Private Limited of Ahmedabad. For delivery at place of business of Dakkan Private Limited in Ahmedabad, place of supply is Ahmedabad. Next, supply involving movement of goods where goods are delivered to recipient on the instruction of. Third person build to ship to model. Clause B of section ten subsection one lays down the provisions to determine the place of supply. In cases where there is a tripartite arrangement of supply commonly known as build to ship to transactions. Or where there is a sale of goods in transit by the original buyer or agents. As per section ten subsection one clause B, if the goods are delivered to a recipient or any other person by the supplier. On the instructions of a third person. On the instructions of a third person who may be acting as an agent or on. If the goods are delivered to a recipient or any other person by the supplier. On the instructions of a third person who may be acting as an agent or on his own account before or during movement of goods. But not after the movement terminates, whether or not there is a transfer of documents of title to the goods. It is deemed that the third person has received goods and the place of supply is the principal place of business of such third person. In simple words, where goods are delivered by the supplier to the recipient at the instruction of a third person. The place of supply is the principal place of such third person and not of the actual recipient. It is important to identify the two supplies involved in this transaction. One supply is by the supplier to third person and the second supply is by. Third person to recipient. This provision deals only with the first limb of supply. Supply by supplier to third person. Second limb of supply. That is supply by third person to recipient will be governed by the provisions of ten subsection one clause A. That is the place of supply will be the location of the goods at that time. And the movement of goods terminates for delivery to the recipient. Okay, here. The person B in Haryana is the person who is making the order. And he places the order with supplier A and he tells that don't deliver the goods to me. Deliver the goods to recipient C in New Delhi. So supplier A give will give the actual invoice to third person B and then goods are delivered to recipient C. So in the first segment, place of supply is in Haryana. For this segment where the actual for this supply, the actual recipient is recipient C. So here the second thing will be recipient C. This will be clause B, this will be as per clause A, place of supply, location of principle, place of business of B. Even though section two clause ninety three of CGST act defines recipient inter alia as the payer of the consideration in this provision. Recipient is the one who actually collects the goods. And the third person is the one who enjoys privity with the supplier to be able to direct him to deliver the goods. And also usually makes payment to the supplier. Now, supply by third person to recipient. In this case, places an order for supply of goods issues invoice to C. Place of supply, location of goods. Location of goods at the time when the movement of goods terminates for delivery to C. That is New Delhi supply chargeable to IGST. Here second limb of supply, supply by third person will be governed by the provision. Third person to recipient. Tola Ram Limited has supply registered in Uttar Pradesh, having principal place of business at Noida, asks Bola Ram Limited of Ahmedabad, Gujarat. To deliver fifty washing machines to its buyer Jola Ram at Jaipur, Rajasthan. Okay, so Tola Ram is the third person here. Bola Ram is the supplier. Jola Ram is at Rajasthan is the recipient. The place of supply of supply between Tola Ram and Jola Ram is. Where. So Tola Ram is the person who makes the order, he is person B. And Jola Ram is the person C. So in this case. The place of supply will be. Haryana first. Uh here, location of goods where the movement terminates for delivery to C. So in the first case, Rajasthan is the place of supply and between Bola Ram and Tola Ram. In that case. Where is Tola Ram located? Uttar Pradesh. So Rajasthan, Uttar Pradesh is the correct answer, option A. Gujarat will not come in place of supply at all because Gujarat is where the goods movement originate. So supplier, place of, the location of supplier doesn't come anywhere. So the first option A is the correct answer. Okay, on that note, let us wrap up today's study session. We have completed. We studied from page number four point eight to page number four point one six. Today is the time we finish the first round. Okay, so on that note, let us wrap up today's study session. I will see you tomorrow. Thank you for joining today. Bye bye.